Gentlemen, call this meeting to order. Sorry for myself being late. We call this meeting to order today for our April 11, 2024 regular board meeting. Welcome everybody here today that's here and also in the virtual world. And our first item on our agenda today is the invocation. Pastor Lee Farmer. Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, let's all stand and stand to the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next item would be approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to it?
Miss Chairman, I have two updates. Since we had the meeting last night with the school division, they will not be present tonight.
Okay.
And also the update from VDOT, since they have the six-year plan public hearing tonight at 7:00 PM, they plan to provide any updates at that time.
All right, that's fine. All right, any other changes? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
A motion to approve with the changes.
All right.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next we have the approval of the minutes. We have the March 7, 2024 special meeting, March 13, 2024 special meeting, and March 14, 2024 regular meeting. Are there any changes or deletions to those minutes? Corrections or anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve minutes.
Second.
All right, and your motion is to approve all of them?
All of them, yes.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next item would be our presentations. And we have a resolution for recognition of Julia Pritchard. Mr. Basie.
Resolution of recognition of Julia Pritchard. Whereas Ms. Julia Pritchard has actively devoted her life to the community of North Omen County, and Ms. Pritchard has been a committed volunteer of the North Omen County Chapter of American Red Cross for more than 26 years, serving as a military liaison, blood drive manager, and shelter assistant, and responding to families who were displaced due to fire and storm disasters and securing shelter and supplies for them. And Ms. Pritchard served for many years as a volunteer for the American Heart Association, actively raising funds for the organization by selling daffodils in the spring. And Ms. Pritchard was active with the American Cancer Society and instrumental in organizing relay-for-life activities and took a personal interest in cancer patients, driving them to doctors and treatment appointments. And Ms. Pritchard, for many years, helped with Meals on Wheels program, providing nutritious meals and delivering fellowship to homebound seniors in our community. And whereas Ms. Pritchard is a lifetime member of the North Omen County Rescue Squad, having served many years as an ambulance driver, now therefore be it resolved that the North Omen Board of Supervisors, with the support of the citizens of North Omen County, hereby extends its appreciation for the time, efforts, and talents given by Ms. Julia Pritchard to the North Omen County community.
All right, thank you, Mr. Basie. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone here tonight for Ms. Pritchard?
It indicated that she was playing on it, but I don't see.
Yeah, she's not here. Set that to the side. All right, next one would be a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Basie.
Proclamation, Observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a common problem in the community, we're preventing such behavior lies in the act of involvement among people. Whereas child maltreatment often occurs when individuals find themselves in stressful situations and not having the necessary knowledge on how to cope due to lack of community resources. And whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from conditions and circumstances that are preventable when part of an engaged and supportive community, whereas all citizens should strive to become more involved in supporting families to better raise their children by creating a safe and nurturing environment. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, and the citizens of North Omen County. Now therefore be it resolved that North Omen County Board of Supervisors hereby recognize April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in North Omen County. And we call this observance to the attention of all our citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in their efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
All right, thank you, Mr. Basie. All right, what's the pleasure of the board? All right, got a motion to have second? Motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, next would be proclamation for Telecommunications Week.
Proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 14 through 20, 2024. Whereas the Congress of the United States and the President of the United States have established the week of April 14 through 20, 2024 as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And emergencies occur around the clock that often require police, fire, or emergency medical services. And when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical service personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And public safety dispatchers are the initial contact to our residents in need and represent a vital link to our police officers and firefighters portrayed through monitoring their activities and providing them information and ensuring their safety. And public safety dispatchers are more than a calm and reassuring voice on the other end of the phone. They are the unseen first responders who are knowledgeable and highly trained individuals working closely with other police, fire, and medical personnel. And each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their position. And whereas public safety dispatchers daily serve the public in countless ways without recognition by the beneficiaries of their service, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the week of April 14 through 20, 2024 to be known as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in North Omen County in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe.
All right, thank you. All right, can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next would be a proclamation to National Library Workers' Day.
Proclamation for National Library Workers' Day. Whereas North Omen County Library provides community members with the knowledge and information they need to live, learn, and work in the 21st century. Whereas there are thousands of academic, governmental, public school, and specialized libraries in the United States that provide excellent and invaluable service to library users regardless of age, ethnicity, or socioeconomic background. Whereas libraries represent a microcosm of the larger society, and library workers play an important and unique role in the communities that they serve by providing an inclusive environment where all are treated with respect and dignity. Whereas librarians and library support staff bring the nation a world of knowledge in person and online as well as personal service and expert assistance in finding what is needed, when it is needed. And where it is important to recognize the unique contributions of all library workers and the value to individuals and society of those contributions. And whereas a steady stream of recruits to library workers necessary to maintain the vitality of library services in today's information society. Whereas libraries, library workers, and library supporters across America are celebrating the National Library Workers' Day sponsored by the American Library Association, Allied Professional Association. Therefore be it resolved that the North Omen County Board of Supervisors proclaim Tuesday, April 9, 2024, as National Library Workers' Day. The Board encourages all in the community to take advantage of the variety of library resources available and to thank library workers for their exceptional contributions to American life.
All right, thank you. All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any other, anything else? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Blue. All right, let's see, update. All right, next one would be Mr. Stuart McKenzie. You got your year-end reports, sir?
Yes, sir. The 2000 end of the year report, the first part of the report mentions the planning commission activities. We're very busy this year. We recommended to the Board of Supervisors to pass commercial tent camping ordinance and make it conditional use in A1, R2, and C1 conservation zoning districts. We recommended the Board pass short-term rentals requiring conditional use in R3 zoning districts. We revised the solar energy facility ordinance. We reviewed the county-owned parcels as requested by the Board of Supervisors and recommended five properties to be considered for sale. We revised the boathouse ordinance, or recommended to revise the boathouse ordinance to allow boat canopies. And we met with the Northern Eck Electric and then with a joint meeting with Dominion about solar energy plans in North Omen County. One of the highlights of the year was we solicited bids for the Great Wacomiko River canoe kayak launch under the Route 200 bridge adjacent to the fishing pier, and were able to construct that and hold an opening ceremony on November 17, 2023. So that forwards our mission to provide more public water access to citizens of the county as stated in the comprehensive plan. The comparison of construction cost from 2022, in 2023, there was $59,793,853 in total construction cost, and that is very close to what was last year, is only 0.37% difference between the two. So really, it was not, it was, no, statistically insignificant. So basically, it's about the same as last year. With regards to structures, there were 54 single-family dwellings built in 2023, 17 modular homes, eight double wides, seven mobile homes, and there were 10 commercial structures that were built in 2023. Underneath that table is a note, the planning commission had wanted to get a better gauge on the commercial construction in the county. And the total commercial construction, well, let me back up. Some of it's remodel repairs, some of it's new construction, but the commercial remodel repair was $1,083,307. And the total commercial investment was $2,981,221 of last year. So there was a bit of construction, and a lot of that was dollar stores. And I'm hitting the highlights here. If you all want to have any questions about anything, you can stop me, and I'll do my best to answer it. I thought I would mention how the structures are broken down in zoning districts. We had 22 structures in A1. We had four in R1 residential general. We had 55 structures built in R2 residential waterfront, four in R3 residential restricted, two in R4 residential recreational, two in conservation C1, two in B1 business, and three in industrial M1 zoning district. The main thing that increased last year was mobile homes. Last, in 2022, we had only, we had none, and this year we had seven. And with regards to the wetland permits, again, Little Wacomiko had most of the permits of all the tributaries in the county. Do you all have any questions, specific questions?
Any board member have any questions?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add in that Stuart's report was for fiscal year. However, excuse me, that kayak canoe launch was about a two-and-a-half-year project. So it was quite a lot of work went in that with both state, county, and federal to get that launched, but it was about a two-and-a-half-year project.
Yeah.
Get that launched, a lot of work.
A lot of work went in there.
Especially on staff.
And we got to thank staff for all the hard work that they did do, and the planning commission for all the hard work they did on to it. All right. Mr. McKenzie, that was a good report. Thank you for your hard work you put into it.
Yes, sir.
So thank you, sir. All right, we need a motion on that. Improve it, all right. Next would be our county administrator's report, and I'll turn that over to you, Ms. Tadlock.
Yes, sir. For the month of March, we had a total of 13 new structures. Total construction cost for the month was $6.1 million, and total construction cost year-to-date, $13.8 million, which is approximately $2.5 million below this time last year. Next item I have is a supplemental appropriation. We have several items. The treasurer's office, total $9,123, 47 cents. IT department, total $11,703. Juvenile and domestic relations, $15,757.72. Sheriff's office, $976.07. Volunteer fire department, $12,976. Emergency services, $68,000. And building inspections, total $55,830.24. This was in an effort to look at the negative line items. And Ms. Dotson and I worked with, mostly Ms. Dotson, but worked with the different departments, and there were approximately 22, 23 transfers that we worked with the different agencies and departments to work within their budget that they had already approved. These particular ones are items where the department may not have had the additional monies in their budget to cover the expense that, and we projected that out for the remaining months, April, May, and June. Some of these items, like the IT department and the building inspections, are items that the Board had previously approved, but we had not done the supplemental appropriation tied to that request. So I can try to answer any questions you may have, but this is in the effort of trying to reduce those or get rid of the negative line items.
What's going on with this telecommunications?
So the telecommunications with the specific one on IT, back at the beginning of this fiscal year, the Board had approved the additional monies for the high-speed internet.
Yeah, I understand that, but if you looked down through it all, just about every line on telecommunications and everybody's department was overspent.
It's what, we changed the phone system. And part of that is I had budgeted less in anticipation that we were coming off of Verizon and moving over to the Code Blue system. Some of those lines had not been removed off of the Verizon, so we were still getting billed for those. Mr. Basie and Mr. Headley have been working on that. They have made some progress on some of those. Some of those are, telecommunications is not only phone systems, but it's also internet tied to those.
Then we got the same issue with postal services, advertising, and office supplies. And I thought we had discussions on office supplies, that all of that was supposed to be consolidated and handed out that way.
That has been. That's all going through Ms. Wilson now on the office supplies. The postal information, that was throwing some negative line item from the standpoint that the treasurer's office had not posted the postage to those particular lines at that particular time. But it's my understanding that they have now posted that, and we've been working with the departments to adjust those.
And I know like on the sheriff's department, and I know this is a little bit of money, but, you know, unemployment insurance on it as well. But you got a vacancy, a full-time vacancy in that position, so you got money there, salary, and benefits. That little bit of money should come from that.
You're talking about the unemployment?
And that, and the overtime rates. I mean, this is my whole point of running these things in the red. Sooner or later, it's going to catch up to you.
Yeah, I know for like the emergency services on that particular one, I mean, and any overtime, you can guesstimate what that cost is going to be at the beginning of the year. But I know Chief Paulerson ran into some staffing issues with vacancies and things like that, so he had to backfill those positions.
And I fully understand that. But a fallback that he has is the revenue coming in from billing. And that's what I'm going to propose to use to offset this.
Well, and some of that, too, we've been talking about using that for capital improvement programs, for ambulances and things like that, so.
I just think, you know, if we're going to have a budget, we need to try to stay within those budgets and understand that things change in a fluctuate. And the Board has always said that if you run short, come to the Board. Don't come to the Board after it's in this kind of shape. Let's get this stuff worked out when you see it happening. It's just dealing with some of the school stuff and the federal funds and all, you know, we should not fund anything until it's brought before this Board and approved by this Board. It needs to be documented. It needs to be on budget transfer forms. Line item it's going into, where it's going out, how it's going to be spent. That's what's gotten us into messing with all these federal funds and all this miscommunications and confusion. We got money going out, money coming in, but at the end of the day, where's it at? And that's the only thing I wanted of this budget is for it to be run like it should be run. And that's the line items balanced. I just don't believe in running any line item in negative. And it was my understanding what line items were running in negative, it would be balanced out at the end of the year. So evidently, it's not enough money there at the end of the year to balance these out. And if we're going to continue to do like this, just open the checkbook up and just let it flow.
Well, there should be enough money in the EMS fund to fund that, no problem, from the paid services.
And I, you know, I know they struggle with scheduling and all that. I understand.
And I know that, too. I'm not faulting them one bit on that. It's a shorthanded, trying to get people to work, it's very difficult.
But when you start seeing like, you know, communications overspent, one department $2,000, and you go down and another one's $11, another one is $12, you know, at the end of the day, that adds up to a large amount of money.
Yeah. And you said that, Ms. Tadlock, you said that you underbudgeted on that, and then, because you figured we were getting rid of Verizon?
I did, yes, sir.
And everything going to Code Blue, so have we been double paying on things?
They, those numbers have not been ported over, and Mr. Headley can explain it better than I can. Those numbers have not been released from Verizon. Is that correct?
Would you comment, Ms. Tadlock?
Code Blue was a charge of the project to move to the new phone system, and I didn't know that numbers hadn't been fully moved over to the new system. We found that, and they have been moved over. But for Verizon, we still have a high bill just for data circuits to do with, you know, not one, that's course, but all the phone stuff, other than fax, fax is still on Verizon.
Are we going to be changing those numbers from Verizon, too, or?
I was told to keep fax numbers on Verizon.
Keep fax numbers on Verizon, okay, because I know you got to have a dedicated line for them.
Right.
Yes. And down in your building inspections, that is the new person we hired?
That is the new position that the Board authorized back last fall. Yes, sir.
So that was not budgeted for?
We, at the time, we did not know that we were going to be obtaining a new position there.
All right. Well, that's nobody's fault on that.
Part of that, that's the fire programs funding, correct?
That's correct. That's the fire programs, and that's in-and-out monies.
Reimbursements.
Then I'll look at the sheriff's office when we're on, because I got to correct myself on that. That's reimbursements coming back in.
Yeah. I see we're in the treasurer's side, or the mileage has increased both for just regular mileage and for education, a lot more than what was already budgeted in the budget. All right, any other questions or comments? No one have any other comments, questions? All right, what's the pleasure of the board then?
Can you break them down and approve them separate?
Ms. Tadlock, you want them separately?
That's up to the board.
All right, we can break them down.
We can break them down.
All right.
We already approved the building inspections, the IT. And we got the grant coming in.
All right, if you're going to do them separately, just go ahead and approve building inspections.
Let's start with the building inspection.
Or you can start top, don't make any difference to me.
That's something the board already approved, so I'll move to approve.
All right, so your building inspections is $55,830.24. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all of them. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, please.
Emergency services approve that as long as the funding comes out of the.
All right, that's $68,000.
Comes out of the EMS billing.
All right, I got a, you say come to the EMS billing?
Yeah, when the revenue recoveries.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
The volunteer fire department, that's grant funding, it comes in from the Department of Fire Programs. Is that for each fire department local?
That's split amongst the fire departments.
The two fire departments, okay.
All right.
I move to approve that one. Second.
All right, I got a motion to second, and that is for $12,976. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
For the sheriff's office, I don't want to mess him up on these reimbursements. But my concern is anything like with an unemployment, or if it was an overtime issue, we need to look within that budget to try to balance it out before it comes back for us to give more money. But I move to approve the sheriff's.
All right, so you approved the sheriff at $976.07. All right, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Chairman, just for clarification, that was for the full amount, $976.07?
$976.07. Thank you. Juvenile and domestic relations?
Yes. What is the CSU expense?
The CSU is the court services unit, and that was originally under the circuit court, the judge's budget. He had asked for that to be moved to the juvenile and domestic relations, because that's a function more of juvenile and domestic versus the circuit court. We were asking for additional monies there, because the line item that that was coming from already had items related to multi-jurisdictional functions coming out of that line item, so we couldn't transfer that money with the new category. So that's why that particular one's in there.
So the judge actually had this, and he had the funding for this, correct?
The judge, it was going over on that line item, if I'm remembering that correctly. So when we saw that, we talked to Judge McKinney on that, and in discussions, he indicated that the CSU program did not fall under him, and so that function needed to come under the juvenile and domestic relations. So there were expenses tied to CSU and expenses tied to the multi-jurisdictional costs. So there again, that's why we requested $3,400.
How long prior to this had that been tied to Judge McKinney's court?
That's been like that for quite a while. I don't know how long that, I can't give you a specific date that's been like that for a while.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to see that one table and go back and see if we can't find any more funding within their budget to cover some of their costs.
They do not have any monies in their budget to cover that. Their specific budget is fairly tight. In their specific budget. Now, we can look at other options and other categories within the budget to see what we can do, but the challenge there is, if you're looking at other departments, pulling which department do you pull from?
I don't think it's right to take funds from other departments to cover somebody else's expenses. Don't have much choice.
Don't have much choice.
So we move to approve that one as well.
All right, that's $15,757.07. Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. IT department.
We already approved that. We just need to approve the funds, so.
Yep.
Move that we approve those.
That's $11,703. You second it, Mr. Long? All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Treasurer's report's on us when we have left.
Yeah. Well, again, we're not going to have no choice, so. Move to approve it, is what move that as well, to approve it.
Motion and second?
Second.
All right, that's for $9,123.47. Any other discussion?
Just will get it through to the end of the year, correct?
That's what, when we sat down and talked to the various departments, that's what our goal was, to ensure that we got that through the funds for April, May, and June.
Okay.
All right.
I really don't want to see this again.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There you go, Ms. Tadlock. What else do you have?
Next item I have is a resolution authorizing the Calio Hometown Community Association to participate in the DHCD Commercial District Affiliate Program. They are reapplying for that status. They did have that before, and the board had authorized them moving forward with that, and they're just, they would like to reapply for that status.
All right. Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I got a motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did. Getting back to the appropriation to approve, the budget transfer forms will be in the board docs next meeting?
We can upload those. They were, we can upload those. Next item we have is a request to use the Lutzberg, the old school board office for the National Day of Prayer on May 2nd, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
They've been using courthouse here.
In times past, they have used the courts.
Any reason for changing, or?
I don't, this is a new request. I don't know the reason behind moving it up there, or if they're still planning on having another one down on the old courthouse front steps or not.
Not that, I don't have any problem with it. I'm just asking the reason why they were changing.
I'm not sure.
What they used to have at courthouse, they want the old school board?
Old school board office.
No reason.
No.
What day is that?
May 2nd.
That falls on what?
What's the time on that, you know?
From 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I'll check on what day of the week that is.
Nobody's going to be up there catering that day, are they?
We have not received any applications for food truck vendors.
Okay.
Thursday, thank you. It's a Thursday.
All right. Any other comments from the board?
If you do get an application for catering that day, but will it be denied because of?
We have not received any applications, and those applications come before the board of supervisors for approval. And that would be at the next meeting, which would be after that time period.
Just don't want to tithe conflict.
Sure.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second? Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Next would be approval of a check register? All right, I got a motion, do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, I got a motion second. Any other discussion on a check register? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
All right.
Is that four to one?
Four to one. All right, next item would be board comments. And we'll start with Mr. Williams, unless you rub a switch around.
No, I don't really have any comments, other than we haven't touched on the Little Wyomka River dredging project in a while. Do we have any updates on that?
The Planning District Commission, and they had sourced out with Mr. Mansfield, and we were applying for some additional grant monies for assistance in the dredging, and that would be to do the plans for the, to begin the dredging process. We also learned that the Army Corps of Engineers, since that falls in the Baltimore District and not the Norfolk District, they were also, they were also looking at starting the process of putting monies towards that project as well. The initial grant was due March timeframe, March, April timeframe. The PDC was assisting with that. I know they were going down to Norfolk to present that material. I have not gotten any updates since that timeframe, but I'll certainly pass that on to the board as soon as we get that.
Thank you.
We're working on them. Possibly Jarvis Creek and Crane Creek also through the Norfolk District. My friend, I think we, I see you Monday, but.
Which one is Jarvis Creek?
Jarvis Creek is down off a tributary of Dividing Creek. If you're familiar with Jimmy Kelly's Oyster operation years back, that was up in there. Booth Seafood was up in there. Several crabbers and fishermen were up in there. It's on the south side going, Second Creek going into Dividing Creek. It has been dredged in the past, and there's a lot of concern now.
All right. Mr. Williams, have anything else?
That's all.
Mr. Long?
Yes. The housing reassessment, Mr., have we decided on a meeting yet?
We had the kickoff meeting, and that was held a week or two ago, and there were several members in attendance, so that is getting underway.
How about the update on the old school board office? What's the latest on that?
The old school board office, we were looking at the engineering firms to do a total assessment, and we have bid it that out. We've gotten the bids back on various components of that, and that's what we need to, we're in the process of reviewing.
Okay, do we have anybody for VDOT here?
They'll be here at 7:00 PM.
Be here at 7:00 PM, Jim. You know, for the public hearing night.
That's it.
Mr. Brand?
Mr. Long brought up the old school board office. We got storm damage up there on the hill that's next to VDOT and along the tree line next to the field there. We need to get that cleaned up. It's a lot of limbs and debris there.
Mr. Albright and Mr. Basie have looked into it. They've gotten an estimate to clean that up and are in the process of getting that straight.
All right, and Mr. Balderson sent me the email a few days ago in regards to some OSHA changes that may have an effect, some rules that may have an effect on volunteer fire and EMS. We need to follow up on that. If all of that goes through, that's going to really have a major impact on we volunteer by departments and EMS agencies. So we need to follow up on that. And I got to attend my first trustee's board meeting for the library, and I was very impressed. When we went in, they had a nice agenda prepared. You know, they had a treasurer's report that's made of this world. I mean, you can find anything and everything you want to know, big finances on the library, and they're very open. And one of the things I was really impressed with, they call it a fixed access wish list, but actually, their replacement of items around the library, and it goes all the way to 2040, and it's figuring in the replacement of heat pumps, desks, computers, gutters, different things like that, computers. And they're really doing a good job looking toward the future and preparing for these costs and saving funds for that as well. And I ended up with all the highlights from the library and activities that they've had going on. So that was, I really enjoyed that meeting. I think we need to have a place on our agenda for committee reports. Not that we need to spend 15, 20 minutes on it, but it would be a good opportunity for the public to hear what committees that we're on and what's going on, and it would be ideal to have a place to post some of these reports and the activities that they have going on within their organization. That's all I got.
All right, that can be done.
One thing I forgot. Go ahead. Ms. Tadlock, they hired all, you know, we're working on something where we hire people, make sure we cover all the avenues before we hire people. And what's the progress on that?
We are looking at personnel policies and updating our personnel policy related to those items. And we'll get that back to the board. We're looking to update our personnel policy, and we'll get that back to the board.
Will that be next month? Next month?
We can try. Yes, sir.
Be good if it's good.
All right.
Because that's going to affect other agencies in the county too.
That would just be for county, the ones that fall under the personnel policy. So.
Okay. Hopefully, we can have something next month. Okay, that's it.
All right. Ms. Fisher?
We have three dump sites in the county, is that correct? We have three dump sites in the county, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
They're property owned by the county.
They are.
The one on 200, we've had a couple of complaints regarding, uh, it being very dark at nighttime, which actually is only during the time of regular standard time in the winter months. I think they close at seven, is that correct?
That's right.
Correct. So, uh, didn't know perhaps a second night light could be put up, especially in the areas of where they dump the glass and, and aluminum, those separate dumpsters off to the side, which would be on the north side of the property.
Recycling side.
Yeah, a couple, I know last, last year a lady fell there and had to be hospitalized. She tripped at nighttime. It wouldn't cost that much and it'd only be a couple of months during the wintertime and it would only be a couple hours during the day that that light would actually burn. But that section, that north side, if you ever look at it when you go by it, uh, in the wintertime, when you do not have daylight savings time, it's very dark. At the very least, I'd like, like for the county to take a look at it and see what they think.
We will.
From a liability standpoint. The second item I got on my mind is, is shipping containers and I'm not one for restrictions and regulations. I like to think Northumberland County can, can stay away from them things as much as possible. However, I am concerned about these shipping containers that, uh, that do have to be permitted. But, uh, I would like to see on the conditional use, I would like to see the county look at perhaps putting a part of that conditional use beam that they would at least painted during things. They're yellow and orange and everything in the world and they stand out like a sore thumb. I figured roughly speaking, if you paid somebody to do it and bought the paint, it would cost less than a hundred dollars. But from an aesthetic point, if the county is concerned with that at all, these shipping containers, they're nice. I'd like to have one myself, but certainly don't want something yellow sticking up in the front yard that everybody has to look at going by. I call your attention to Typer's Road, uh, oh, Typer's Road and, and Brown Store Road, right there at that intersection. There's several right there and they are not very nice looking. You look at pretty green wheat fields and pretty green soybeans and cornfields and there's this big orange thing sticking up out there. But just consider perhaps putting part of the conditional uses, painting them things pine tree green or something of this nature. Something that will blend in with the county, doesn't look so bad. Just a consideration, that's all I ask. That's the only thing I have.
All right, can we do that next time we have, um, one come up for a permit, just tell them, I want to get it painted?
Yes, sir. Uh, you would just make that...
Or do we need to just send it back to the planning commission, let them put it in the ordinance?
No, I, I think you could just do it as a condition of that conditional use permit if, um...
And I think, uh, any color that would blend in with the, with the...
Yeah.
With the area. Perhaps...
If they're painted the same color as, as their house or any other building they have over there.
Pine tree green or something, just blend in with everything.
Yeah, it would blend in then.
And there's getting, getting more of them all the time.
Is that all you have, Mr. Hager?
That's all, thank you.
All right. Item I'm gonna bring back up would be the old sheriff's office over here. We went in and looked at it last fall, early fall. We haven't made any progress on that and we are in the need of additional office space. We have to start making some decisions here.
There, again, that was part of the, um, engineering, um, assessment, uh, site assessments and part of that bidding process that we were looking at, or the RFP process that we were looking at.
When you talked about it last, Paul, what were you contemplating doing with it?
We were looking at it to see what kind of condition the building is in. The sheriff's office part of it is not in that bad a shape. It could stand a roof and it's chopped up inside a lot. So if you went in and you took the roof off, it knocked all the walls out, the interior walls that is, and then, um, laid it off in office space, I think it'd be pretty good. The old, uh, the old jail part of it, that just needs to be demolished. It was either looking at that and adding on to it, try to make some additional space or see what the cost would be. If it was cost prohibitive, we would just tear the whole thing down and just start over. So we were gonna look at that. Statelock said about the engineers, so we, as soon as we get that taken care of, we can get them on that. We'll have some meetings, try to get some of these things done. But we are in a big need of, of office space.
I think the new part was built, I think around 99.
That's about right.
And it's got a large, well, we, we had a cafeteria area in there, which is a large room. You can get, Jennifer, still there? What are we getting, 30 people in there or something like that, Jennifer? 25, 30 people, something like that. And, uh, a lot of smaller rooms. And I agree that one of the biggest problems was the roof, it's a flat roof.
Yeah. But that can be, if the rest of the building's in good shape, just tear the roof off, put another roof over it. Cause if you're gonna add on to it, that's what you ought to do anyhow. And then you gotta, we got some additional space. We got a lot of things we can move into it. Then we just need some extra space in case we do like a reassessment. We have nowhere to put them right now. We can work on that as quickly as possible. All right, that's all I have.
I got one more thing.
All right, go.
Oh. With me still being fairly new on the board and we got two new board members, what is the vision of the county? I've, I've really not heard what the vision is, what, what direction does the board want the county to go in? We got new members. I really think it would benefit us if we took the time and the board had a meeting. And we all see, and see if we can't determine a vision for the county, what direction we need to go in. We spend so much time reacting to the issues that come before us. But we need to be proactive in a lot of the issues that, that can come before us and be prepared. And I think that's part of the vision for the county. I think we need to look at growth. And we spend so much time on budgets, we spend so much time on, on reacting to issues that's coming before us. But we've spent no time since I've been on the board in trying to be proactive and, and trying to create a vision for the county.
Well, we certainly set time aside for it. And we can do it anytime y'all want to.
I think we gonna, we need clarity on a lot of things.
We can leave this meeting open and have one here very soon.
That's fine.
I think in regard to that also, we should, should put some consideration on the comprehensive plan and where that stands, that's, that's not a rule book, that's just a guide.
But it's a good guide.
But it's a good guide and that, that would go hand in hand with what you're saying.
Yes.
What is the comp plan up for review?
I hope you weren't gonna ask that.
It's, it's being reviewed now by the planning commission. Or it's to be before the planning commission. I know that they had started working on it and then got tied up with several items that got sent back to the board and, uh, different things. So they, I, I know they want to get, and talking with Mr. McKenzie, try to get back on that.
It's quite an extensive document.
Oh, yes it is, yes it is. It is. Been through a review more than once. All right. Any members have any other comments? While we're commenting. All right, if not, we'll move on to our next item. And our next would be public comments. We have anybody signed up tonight? Thank you, Mr. Morgan. All right, public comments. We have a few people here signed up tonight. I remind everybody, we usually have four minutes, but if you are trying to finish up and need just a few seconds more, I, I will allow that. All right, and first person on the, uh, sign up sheet tonight is Linwood Blizzard. Come on up, sir.
Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors. I stand before you today as one of the co-chairs for the Joint Finance Committee. I know you had a joint meeting with the school board last night. As my understanding, most of the considerations was on the fiscal year 24's appropriations and expansions. But I would like to get an update on where we stand with fiscal year 25's, um, actual budget for the school board. In our meeting on January 25th, we had come to a hope and resolution of bringing the board, bringing the school board's budget to, to a vote after work sessions as well as public hearing on tonight, April the 21th. It concludes that will not and has not happened. Um, I know the budget went back for re, for revision in the March school board meeting. But we need to assess how to get the budget approved essentially. Is it possible to have it approved in the March, May, on May 9th in the board meeting? I know you still require work sessions. You have comments and questions that are out there. It also requires a public hearing before we even bring it to vote here at the boards, at the Board of Supervisors. Want to know what the update is with that, as we realize that the school year's looming, coming to a close and contracts were slated to be issued, which is kind of the reason why we created the entire task force as a joint finance committee.
All right, we are reviewing questions that have come back. We have more questions still out there. We have not set a actual work session yet. That's something we'll probably be doing here in the near future. Mr. Brand, you got any comments you want to say too, cause you're sitting there with us too.
We still gotta schedule the, uh, once the questions are completely answered, we gotta schedule the, uh, public hearing.
We gotta schedule a public hearing after the questions are answered. And then we'll start, we'll get our work sessions going. Well, he's the thing we need to do this as soon as possible. Something I missed, I can't remember what it is. What was that, Mr. Long?
We, we need to do these things as soon as possible because the school want, uh, we need to... It'd be good if we could complete these things where we can get this budget passed by May.
May 9th is your next schedule.
Yeah, May 9th, because if not, we're gonna start losing people. Because other counties, if they approve theirs...
All right, how, how you gonna start losing?
People start jumping.
All right, how you gonna start losing people? Explain that to us.
Because a lot of people wanted to, wanna know...
Are you talking about a contract?
Huh?
You talking about a contract?
Yeah, a contract.
All right. The school system already knows how much federal and state funding they're getting, so they can fund the contracts rather than that. Which is no problem.
But see, they haven't passed the contracts, they gotta pass the contracts out.
Yeah, but they know they have federal and, and state funding coming in, which will cover all the contracts. Then they're only waiting on the county to approve that portion.
I, I don't know. We, we still need to prove, try to prove that those contracts...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying we're gonna drag our feet on to it.
Yeah, we need, we need to...
But there is no reason why they cannot approve their contracts for the teachers.
But we don't need to wait till the last minute, uh, and let other counties get up ahead of us by approving that budget and we use the last one to approve ours. We don't need that. That's not good.
I think Mr. Haney's saying that, that part of the budget becomes approved, but usually the budget's approved as a whole for the school board. Pending, obviously, state appropriations.
That's correct, Mr. Blizzard. As far as holding up a teacher's contracts, you know, you, you know you got X amount of money coming in from the feds and the states. So you know you'll be getting all of that. You're just not quite sure exactly how much you're gonna, the county's gonna be able to come up with. But that would still fund all of your, all of your contracts like that. So you, you wouldn't be having to wait, you know, you can go ahead and fund them, teachers have it. And then as soon as we get our, all get together and approve our amount, then you'll get the final amount.
Maybe there's probably miscommunication between the school board and the Board of Supervisors on the actual approval of teachers' contracts then. Now maybe you need to be, uh, coming together of the joint finance committee and make sure we understand how that actually works. Cause what you're saying is not how the school board understands their budget, I'm pretty sure.
Whether they get a budget or not from us, it doesn't interfere with them issuing their contracts to their teachers. Because it's not like they're starting off of a zero balance for that year. They, they will at least have the amount of money that they had the previous year. So that doesn't delay, that shouldn't delay any contracts going there to any teachers because they're still gonna be funded, either, um, level funded or additional funded. So either way, first day of school's gonna happen. School's gonna open. We're gonna have teachers. It should not delay teachers getting their contracts. It's not like that they're not gonna have any funding at all. They're gonna have state funding, federal funding, and they're at least gonna have the same amount of funding they got the previous year from the county. So it really shouldn't... I understand, I really understand why they want to issue the contracts and know that they have a certain amount of funding coming in. And I, I fully understand that and I'm not trying to give you a hard time. But I have a hard time sitting here every year hearing that the world is gonna come to an end if the budget's not approved because the teachers can't get their contracts because it's not so. The schools will at least get the, the same amount of funding they got the previous year. They're gonna get the federal funding, they're gonna get the state funding. And it should not have any impact on getting the contracts to the teachers.
But I understand what you're saying.
But I want to support them. I'm not saying I don't want to support them, but it's just hard to hear that.
But when the school board is here, you need to state your opinion then for them.
They're not here tonight, Mr. Long?
No, not here tonight.
And I would say the same thing to them.
I'm talking about when they were here.
Yes.
When they were here. You need to bring that up to them at that time.
Right. And I'm not trying to give Mr. Blizzard a hard time. I'm just...
Right.
He's representing the school board tonight and a part of the finance committee and we are having a conversation. I'm not trying to be disrespectful to him at all. I'm just trying to state my opinion.
So I'm the other half of the joint finance committee and I think I'd like to retract this from the conversation on the contracts because that's a little bit of, I think what Dr. Blizzard was, was trying to get to is the joint finance committee worked pretty hard with the school board and the Board of Supervisors to try to come up with a schedule. Granted, the final school budget can come in until March 11th. Granted, there are still questions outstanding. Um, not trying to pin everyone down tonight, but I think we as a joint finance committee, sorry if I can speak on your behalf, would just like to know what the path looks like to the end. So, contract society, right? Whether or not there's going to be, um, a vote, it's hard to say. I know the questions are still outstanding. They need to come in, they need to be reviewed. Does the Board of Supervisors at this point have any sense of when there might be the next step? Or should we take the opportunity to call for another joint finance meeting to try to rework the schedule and understand, as you said, Mr. Long, to talk about it? I think, is that, is that fair?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Good.
So is your druthers that would call for another meeting to try to look at it and then look at the questions and, and try to redo that? Would that be helpful or is that just another meeting on the books that would get in the way of the process the board has in place? That's all.
All right, well, we have not set an actual work session yet. We have that to do yet. And that is, we're gonna try to hold a meeting open so we can have some discussions on all these things. If you want to set another meeting date, it may be a good thing to do.
Where are we at?
You think so, Mr. Brand?
Yes, and, and that's fine. Where are we at with setting the date for the public hearing? Where, has information, all the information come in yet? If not, how much more needs to come in before we can actually advertise that date? Because that, that's holding us up.
Yeah, that's, that's the holdup right there. That is the holdup.
And I would like to try to stay on schedule.
We still have some more information. Hopefully we will receive that this week. And, uh, we can receive, if we receive that, we can set a date.
Okay.
What, you talking about information from the, uh, school board?
School board.
When the last time you talked to them, uh, the superintendent?
About the budget, yeah.
Yeah. We, I don't know when the last time I talked to her about it. I mean, I've been in contact with the school division about getting the updated information. They had provided the updated, we needed clarification because the revenue and expenditures did not line up. That information has been provided. So we have the information to be able to move forward and advertise.
Of all the questions, so I know there was a second set of questions that went over, have those questions been received, and are they public, or are they still outstanding?
We received those questions yesterday at about quarter, 4:30, quarter to 5:00 yesterday.
Okay, so they haven't been analyzed and they're not public yet?
We, I've not gotten a chance to look at those.
Okay.
And I don't know if the board has gotten a chance to look at those either.
I have not looked at them yet.
So another meeting probably wouldn't be helpful, right? That would just get in your way?
I think we need to.
I think the real question is, based on the idea of your next board meeting being made May the 9th, would a May 2nd public hearing be possible, based on where we are right now?
I guess it's possible, yeah. It's probably possible, because we're going to, if I hadn't had, if I did not have this meeting tonight, I would probably be reviewing those questions.
I think we need to review those before.
We got to review those questions.
Absolutely.
And, you know, they came in yesterday afternoon, you know, late.
Yeah, you don't have time to review them.
And we had the meeting yesterday, and I haven't had time to do anything, because I was preparing for this meeting. And I'm, my fellow board members are doing the same thing, but we will review the questions. And then we can have a meeting, I may call a meeting next week.
Yeah, let's do that.
I think if possible, the latest would be May the 2nd to bring.
Yeah, somewhere in that timeframe, yeah.
I think we need to shoot for that. I think we need to.
Yeah, that's what, I don't have a good problem doing it. We call a meeting, we get our heads together, then we'll set a date, just like that, and we can get it straight.
Thank you.
Is that okay, Mr. Blizzard?
That's all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments, sir. All right, next person is Tom Jeffries. Come on up, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Haney.
You too, sir.
You as well. Members of the board, Mr. Tadlock, Mr. Gregory, and all other officials and staff of the county, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. There's a growing sentiment in our nation that the higher levels of government have failed to protect we, the people. We see deadlock in Washington and Richmond from ineffective representatives who seem to lack the skill and the desire to reach across the aisle, or to see past their own bias in ideology. Reasons include apathy, a focus on reelection instead of governing, keeping a low profile, or simply putting their own personal interests above God and country. Some representatives are compromised by special interest lobbies and crony capitalism. Campaign contributions often bear more weight than resolving issues in favor of the citizens. Regulatory capture is a clear and present danger. The agencies we trusted to safeguard our rights are often controlled instead by the very industries that they are charged to regulate. The three-letter agencies have become sledgehammers that politicians wield against citizens they disagree with, rather than being the protectors of our rights, laws, and freedoms. But there is hope and encouragement to be found, and lots of it. You are the direct and first line of defense for ensuring the citizens' concerns are heard. Our voices flow through you in public comment, on the record, and by working with our local representatives who live and work alongside of us every day. Some will say, what really can be done locally to challenge massive public-private corporations or failed regulations and legislation adopted at the state or federal level? The answer, I believe, is actually quite a bit. That is because, as our local representatives, you and the tens of thousands of you across the country, have your finger on the pulse of the nation. You know that pulse better than any other political office or position in higher government. We, the people, thank you for your service and your dedication. Your efforts will only become more important and impactful going forward. In fact, we're counting on that. That is because more and more citizens are becoming aware of how their rights and the pursuit of happiness, as outlined in the Declaration of Independence, have been usurped. Your efforts can be an inspiration and an example for local government and citizen engagement across this great nation. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you too, sir.
Thank you.
All right, our next person is Paul Carey.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I trust that you've gotten some advanced information about the matter of bringing to your attention today. This concerns abandoned vessel at the mouth of Bridge Creek. This boat is likely the largest abandoned craft in Northumberland County. It's 81 feet long, 18 feet, displacement of 66 tons, but in its current state, it's more likely somewhere between 11 and 13 tons. And it's been there since mid-November. I happened to witness the event when it was abandoned there. You already have the story on that. We believe, and we're asking your assistance, this vessel warrants urgent attention to hazardous residues, fluids from four GM 671 diesel engines and their cooling systems and auxiliary routes. There's lead paint throughout the vessel, and we're concerned, of course, that's contaminated sediment. And this is an area in which oysters and blue crabs are actively occurring in the harbors. So, boat is in water that's deemed state waters. It stands off the end of the dock, and boat left, and my neighbor, Richard Lenses, he's here with me today just to say a word. We're going to be brief, because we understand we are the last thing standing between you and your adjournment. We do have information that DMRC has a discretionary fund for the purpose of dealing with vessels such as this. From what I have been told, DMRC would be interested in hearing the views of this county before they would initiate a recovery program. We hope that the state's discretionary resources would be promptly applied to plan and execute the removal of this noxious derelict. The, for your information, the owner, Alexander Cooney, is scheduled for his trial on the 22nd, and this is for contaminating state waters. I'd like to give my last minute to introduce my neighbor, Richard Lenses, who is the most affected of us, amongst my neighbors. I want to thank you for the chance to speak with me today. We'd be glad to take your questions.
I'd also like to thank you all for giving me a minute or so. If it's okay, I have just a couple of brief things I'd like to pass out, if I could, to the board. Maybe they could take a, oh, thank you, sir. Maybe they could take a, let me make sure there's enough copies there for everyone. Take a look. I'm at 5:30 Bridge Creek Circle. I've, my wife and I bought the property about two years ago, and I'm just finishing our retirement house. It's about 99.9% done, and I'm, we're going to retire there, and I'm planning on the final inspection in the next week or two. I simply just wanted to show you the mess that I'm sort of stuck with here, and honestly, I don't really know what to do. My dock is, is useless. My boat can't come and go, I can't get in and out, and this gentleman dropped this 80-foot bombshell, and I really, I don't know what else to do, to be quite frank with you. It's devalued the property considerably, I'm sure, and I have a useless dock and a brand-new house that's just about finished. I thank you all for your time and your consideration, and if you had any questions about anything, we'd be happy to answer them for you. Thank you very much.
When is it, when is the court date, sir?
It's April 22nd, sir. The VMRC charged Mr. Cooney with, I think, polluting, contaminating state waters and something else.
I looked at this boat myself.
Oh, yes, sir.
About a year ago, and it was, VMRC, I was, I had a contract with VMRC to move one of the, one of these vessels, not this big, year before last, and they're very hard to get moving.
Yes, sir. It was, it was just up the creek, and it's been nuts.
I know, I know. I'm surprised it floated long enough to get where it was.
Yes, sir.
It actually was on the bottom most of the time, whereas tied up to the dock.
Yes, sir.
And they kept the pumps running, just so VMRC would think that it was still floating, because as long as it was floating, it was okay. Wasn't on state bottom, but.
Yeah, the diver that was out there the day or two after it sunk told me that it has like 20,000 pounds of lead ballast in it, and, you know.
It's, it's going to take a crane and barge operation to go in there. You can't remove it from shore.
The boat actually hit the front of my boat, and my anchor just like stuck right through the wooden hull. It's so deteriorated, it's so rotten, and it's like.
Personally, personally, I haven't seen much action through the court system on this, you know. I hope good luck for you. I hope you have the best of luck in the court system, but.
I don't know what else to do, honestly.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your time, I greatly appreciate it.
Well, thank you, sir.
Mr. Tadlock, what conversations has the county had with VMRC to this point about this situation?
I am actually going to turn that over to Mr. Basie, because he's been following that with Rachel Peabody down VMRC.
For this specific vessel, I have not had any conversation with her directly. We have a list of vessels, and I think Stuart may have had it in one of his reports, that we have identified that are abandoned and derelict for possible removal. We're also not, not only talking with VMRC, we're also talking with Lisa Hall with the tourism board, and she is working with, on a similar project with DEQ, looking at some other funding options that we may be able to use, and we prioritize, in my conversations with her, we prioritize this as our number-one vessel of the list that we wanted to give removed, along with the one at Lodge Creek was the second one. They were our top two.
Thank you.
It's going to be a major cost factor. The vessel's got to be taken apart, put on a barge, and then it's got to be disposed of, hauled away and disposed of. And it's 80-some feet, 86 feet, I believe?
81 feet.
81 feet.
This, this vessel has been surveyed, Brad Nutt.
Yes.
Has engaged a couple of surveys. The hull below the waterline is so far deteriorated, you could drive a screwdriver right through it by hand. The estimate was on the north side of $100,000, and this was about something on the order of two years ago. Since then, the boat was diapered, which is the correct procedure to move something in this kind of distress, but dragged across a sandbar because of the combination of the tide, the physical characteristics of the channel, and the inexperience of the owner. And that wiped off all of the diapering and did further damage to the hull, including the keel area. So far as I know, there has not been a diver updating and surveying where the vessel now is.
With possibility of fluids still on this boat, so on its transmission fluid, engine oil, antifreeze, Mr. Balderson, is that something that Todd Cannon from the state could come and take a look at?
Possibly, yes.
Would you mind reaching out to him? Because.
I had the, I'm sorry, sir, I don't mean to interrupt you, but when the boat originally sank, I did call the VMRC, the U.S. Coast Guard, and also the environmental EPA department. One of those pictures was a larger oil slick that came from the diesel, the four-degade diesel. The diesel fuel had been pumped out of that boat prior to them attempting to move it.
But that's the fuel that was, this was not an evacuation of residues. This was just a quick and dirty recovery of what was easy to take.
Right, and your emergency management gentleman was there, I don't know if he's here tonight, but the emergency management gentleman from Northumberland County was there also when it sunk. I retained a maritime attorney, and we attempted to use, go through the wreck act. There's a derailing boat act evidently, whereas the U.S. Coast Guard and the Army Corps of Engineers are obligated to take an abandoned boat away from an area where it's blocking and appearing bright, as I understand it. And you can obviously see from the picture, my boat's 36 feet long in that picture, so you can see how big this thing is. And we had zero luck, the Coast Guard attorneys would, none of them will touch it, and the Army Corps of Engineers wanted nothing to do with it.
Do you still get an answer?
To your question.
Yes, sir.
Well, this performed the first day, were just the typical day of event cursory inspections.
There's currently, there's currently a court of captive order on the boat now from the U.S. Coast Guard, which, as I understand it, and I'm no expert on this, believe me, that the boat is not to be moved without the U.S. Coast Guard looking at it, and there's evidently a very severe fine and potential jail time for anyone to move the boat.
That, that came down from Group Baltimore, I read that. That order came down from Coast Guard Group Baltimore, I read that order, and that is, that is in fact.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So that's a current, there's a current court of captive order.
Doesn't do anything for the problem right now, though.
Well, no, sir.
Nobody's going to move that boat. That boat's not going to be moved. The only way it's going to be getting out of there, in my professional opinion, is taking apart piece by piece by crane and barge.
I think you're 100% right, sir. I, it's, the hull is, the hull is, to me, as a novice, I mean, you can stick your fingers almost through it. And I'm not a boat expert, believe me, it's not in good condition. I don't know how to get it out of there, to be honest with you. So that's where it stands right now.
If I understood the point of your question, Mr. Brand, the assessment of the residues has never been undertaken. They're still there. This warrants professional examination, especially in light of the time that may be involved to mobilize the resources to engineer the salvage and recovery and assess the impact in the immediate area.
I'm surprised the Coast Guard hadn't made the owner at least put a floating boom around it.
And that's, that's what I was getting at?
Or, or.
Because it should not continue to allow a slick.
No, but it should be contained.
Let me say one thing about its location. It's exposed to a long fetch on the Little River to the east, so if you have any breeze moving at all, it's very difficult to see the sheen. You need almost glass-like, placid conditions to detect this.
I have very good pictures of it.
Yeah, I have photographed the sheen, and I think that was in the package as we referenced.
Mr. Fisher, you're more familiar with this than, than I am. With the Coast Guard restrictions on it, can someone go near that boat now to examine that?
There's no restrictions on anybody going on it that I know of. Only the restriction is, is it possible anyone trying to remove it?
To remove?
Because it is a hazard of navigation, and anybody with any, my opinion, anybody with any reasonable amount of sense to look at that thing and try to move it was a clear idiot. And I think the person who sold that boat, he really got off lucky, because he had a hell of an expense on his hands if he had.
I would like to see.
Yes, sir.
In the, in the sale, which took place three years ago, it was about a month before, in fact, the prior owner, Captain Tom Nutt.
I know him. I know him, yes.
The terms of the sale were unusual, but I think it describes what was intended to be a fair transaction between two willing partners. be a fair transaction between two willing partners. Mr. Nutt paid the buyer $5,000 in this transaction. And the reason for that was, it was understood at the time that the cost to float the vessel out would run about $10,000. And Mr. Nutt, as explained to me by his son, decided to split that in half with the buyer. So there was, there was no cash received by the seller in this transaction.
Mr. Nutt got a deal.
He did get a deal. Unfortunately, though, he had to litigate over the three years in the interim, right through last October, to cause the buyer to take action. And of course, that set the stage for what happened.
Yes, yes, yes. It's a mess. I feel very sorry for you, sir.
All right, nothing else that we can...
I'd like to just say, I'm a neighbor. I'm at 516, next door to Mr. Lenace's. I saw, like Paul did, I saw it come up the river, go in circles. They just lost control of it. And what hasn't been mentioned, they had three or four pumps running to keep more water, trying to keep more water out of the boat than was coming in the boat. I'm concerned with, as everybody in Bridge Creek should be, concerned with crabs and oysters in the upcoming season. There are a lot of oyster farming down in the creek itself. Personally, my wife and I built a new house there in 2019. And at my age, I like to keep everything, and I'm going to use a little term here, shipshape, because that's long-term for this story right here. So at my age, I like to have everything market-ready, and I am not market-ready now with that mess sitting there. I call it the USS Mess, United States Ship Mess. Thank you, gentlemen. I saw your agenda in the paper today. I know you're busy.
Thank you, sir. All right, I have no one else on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
All right, do we have anybody in the virtual world tonight that would like to speak as a public comment? Any public comments from anybody that's in the virtual world tonight? Anybody, Ms. Morgan? All right, I will close the public hearing now. All right, we have, our next item would be to convene and close the meeting, but, gentlemen, I would suggest that we move that toward, after our public hearing tonight. Our public hearing tonight is the review of the six-year plan, and that's Mr. Beal. Good seeing you, Mr. Beal.
Is the channel off?
I think that's off.
Oh, it's off.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? There we go, okay.
Got you now.
Do you want me to do my normal update first, or do you want me to do the secondary six-year plan? I'll do it as she got it up. I'll do this.
Yeah, let's just go and get the plan done first.
Okay. All right, I'll walk you through it. This is the secondary six-year plan for fiscal year '25 through '30. That starts in July of '24. These are the secondary routes, not primary routes. So secondary routes are routes numbered 600 and above. Primary routes are 599 and below. So these are all the secondary routes. This is the cover sheet of the plan. You can see that the funds come from two different sources. One is tele fees, and the other is unpaid road funds. The tele fees, if you remember your phone bill back when you had a landline, you had a right-of-way usage fee on there. And that's the fees that the utility companies collect from the users to use the right-of-way to install utilities. So those funds are collected and redistributed back to localities for transportation improvements based on the population. And then unpaid road funds, the existing state-maintained gravel roads that are in the secondary system, they look at your mileage within the county, and the roads that have more than 50 vehicles per day factor into how much money you get in your unpaid road funds. So once we settle on, once we finalize the update, I'll sign off on this, and the county administrator will sign off for the county. So currently, we have one project in the secondary six-year plan. That's the hard surfacing of Addys Point Road. We call that a rural rustic project. You can see there, the cost is $95,000. If you remember, last year when we updated this, we used a cost of $140,000. And that's just kind of a rough estimate that we used to get the ball rolling. Since then, we've been out to Addys Point Road, done some stone depth checks and some other evaluations. We really feel like we can get that done for $95,000. So that brings in the construction year to fiscal year '25, which starts in July of '24. So we are planning to hard service Addys Point Road into the summer. You can see the total amount there is a little over $30,000 in any given year. So once we finish Addys Point, there won't be a lot of money available in the current year. There would be, you know, almost $40,000, I guess, the 25,000 of previous funds that are in the countywide engineering and surveying item, as well as the fiscal year '25 funds in 19,244. Those would be available, the total of that would be available in July of this year. It's a six-year plan, so as we look into the outer years, there's a total of almost $200,000 that could be allocated for a project. We typically, the board has typically used both the tele fees and the unpaid road funds to hard service existing state-maintained roads. Tele fees can be used for most anything on a secondary route. The unpaid road funds have to be used on unpaid roads with more than 50 vehicles per Next slide is just a little bit about the rural rustic program. These are unpaid roads that are already in the state secondary system. They can't carry more than 1,500 vehicles per day, which none of yours do. They do have to be identified as a line item in the secondary six-year plan for us to improve them. They are predominantly for local traffic, so if you're going to do a big rezoning or something like that on a gravel road, it might not be a good candidate for this program. The drainage improvements that we do are just minor in nature. We replace some culverts, regrade the ditches, that sort of thing. Next slide is your list of gravel roads. These are roads that are already in the system. The ones highlighted in yellow there have more than 50 vehicles per day. If you look to look over to the 2022 vehicle-per-day count on the right-hand side. Addys Creek is already in the system, so there's nothing for you to do on that. Cross Hills Road is the only one left that currently has more than 50 vehicles per day. So if you do want to prioritize a gravel road to be hard-surfaced, if you use unpaid road funds, you'd have to do Cross Hills. If you want to do another road on that list, only could use the tele fees. That's really it. If you all have any questions, for me?
All right, the board members have any questions for Mr. Beal? No questions for Mr. Beal? All right. Let's see, you need a motion to approve this, don't you, Mr. Beal?
You want to get public comment first?
Yes, I know. I'm just trying to get my ducks in a row, make sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. We need open public comment, too. Do we have a sign-up sheet tonight for public comment on this?
You would need to open the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to open the public hearing on the six-year plan now, so as soon as Ms. Morgan gets back with the sign-up sheet. Let's see if we have anybody signed up. Got anybody? All right, sign-up sheet has no one here that's signed up. Would anyone like to speak on the six-year plan? Anyone like to speak on the six-year plan? All right, would anybody in the virtual world like to speak on the six-year plan? Do we have anybody? Would anybody in the virtual world like to speak on the six-year plan with Mr. Beal? All right, since we have no one that wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Matters before the board. Board's pleasure. Mr. Beal, you have any other comments before we take a vote?
I'll just give you a couple scenarios. It doesn't matter. You can do nothing, just leave it alone and pass it as it is. You don't lose any funding, it just accumulates. We're required to update the plan at least every other year, because you receive less than $100,000 in any given year. So one option is do nothing. If you want to prioritize all the available funding within the six years, it's a little less than $200,000. You could add about 4/10ths of a mile. We use about $80 a foot when we're hard-surfacing a road. I'm assuming that you would continue to hard-surface existing gravel roads like you have done. So if you wanted to continue with the rural rustic program, you could, you could take about 4/10ths of a mile road and go ahead and prioritize that. For Cross Hills, I think it was 1.6 miles long, we'd have to break that up into phases. So another option would be, if you wanted to say, hey, we want to spend $175,000, we can put that on Cross Hills and just do as much of it as we can. So that would be another scenario. If the board has another project that they want to use local funds for, they could add that project to the secondary six-year plan. We just need to identify the funding source for it.
All right, which pleasure the board?
Do we know of anything else that needs to be added?
Uh, not right off the top of my head, I do not know. Any of y'all know any other road you'd like to add into it?
I've got one question, one question, if I may.
Yes.
What was the, how did you prioritize Addys Point Road over top of the other roads you have listed here? How's that selection process done?
So that's based on the board's direction. So it might be available funding or...
Okay. So that was the direction the board gave? Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Or any other roads that you think we could do, even if it's partial?
I don't know of any.
Do you have any suggestions, Mr. Beal, that you know of?
I would, I mean, just looking at the traffic counts, you know, there's not that much unpaid road funds. It's only like $3,000 in the out years, so it doesn't get you very far.
What if we just carried that money over until next time?
I think it's a good idea, because we'd be finished with Addys Point and any leftover funds we have there. You have a clear picture of what you got.
That might be the best thing to do, is just go ahead and get Addys Point done, and any other funds we have left, just carry them over.
You all probably know Cross Hills better than I do, but it looks like there's a farm there, maybe one other house.
Yep.
And so I don't know where that traffic count was taken, but it says 78 vehicles a day. I don't know if it's back and forth to the farm.
Also, that Cross Hills Road is quite used when 200 is blocked off for whatever reasons. Main traffic from Wacomika to Kilmona uses that road from, if the 200 is blocked off between Delano Store and Wacomika Church, that is used for the main flow of traffic. If it happened to be that they were doing construction, or an accident, or anything like that, and that traffic count was made that time, that traffic's going to be substantially higher than normal use. There's a small grain elevator right at the entrance to Delano Store, and there's three houses on that road that I know of. And the worst part of it is down at the north end, where you have that large hill comes up across that stream. Quite treacherous sometimes in there. But I'm thinking that traffic maybe, it might have been that, I don't know.
You know, Rogers Creek, they show 40 vehicles a day on Rogers Creek, and it's only 4/10ths of a mile.
We closed Wacomika.
So you might serve more people with, you know, a less expensive project. But it's completely what the board wants to do.
They might as well adopt the plan as is. Might as well adopt it as is.
Adopt it as is, and any carryovers would just stay right there.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
I think that would be the most reasonable way to go. Is that, is that the opinion of the board? We just adopt it as is? All right, that's a motion. Do we need to, do I have a second? All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go, Mr. Beal. I thank you for your time...
You're welcome.
...on this issue. Now, we do have the other take care of, and we'll start with Mr. Williams.
I don't have any new ones. I've just, I have noticed that the ones we've brought to your attention last go-around have not been identified, or not been taken care of yet. Just making sure they're still on your radar.
I have my list from last night.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if you don't have anything else, Mr. Williams, will it Mr. Law?
Get him, Mr. Law.
From the Brown Store Road on the Wacomika side coming in, need a couple hoses in the main highway there. Need patching.
So that's on the Wacomika side of Brown Store Road?
I don't know if it's up, but it was a sign, a state sign leaning on the Distly Road.
Which road was it?
Distly Road, it was a state sign leaning over, but I don't know if that's been corrected or not.
You recall what kind of sign it was? You recall what kind of sign it was?
That's all I have.
Mr. Brandt?
You want to talk to Lake Road?
Yeah, I'm going to ask him, send me some more dates on that.
All right. Only thing I have then is just let the guys know that come over tonight of the tornado in the Calio area a week or so, go just thank them for the time, and they've done a good job.
Glad, glad to have had them.
Yes, yes.
They were very helpful, so thank them for us.
I will.
Yeah.
I'm going to tell you, between BDOT, Dominion, and the crews that Dominion brought in, they done the cleanup of the roads and got the power lines back up. And I mean, everybody done an awesome job, but I mean, it was, it was well done.
Very good. You got anything else? Mr. Fisher?
Does the state have a program for cleaning out road culverts on private driveways at the state highway?
So if they're blocking drainage or affecting the drainage along the roadway, we will do it.
And how does one go about that?
Call the 800 number and just put in a work order.
Put in a work order?
Mm-hmm. Or if you know which one, you can tell me right now, and I'll write it down.
Yeah, I'll get straight with it down. I'll go ahead and call it in, if that's okay. All right, thank you, thank you, that's all.
What was that question again?
Well, excuse me, did the state have a program for cleaning out road culverts where the highway meets the private driveway? I've noted, especially with this tremendous rain we had last week, a lot of them are blocked up and in turn puts water on the fields and puts water on the highways. And it's, I just want to know if the state had a program for getting it cleaned out?
The way we've been doing that, we have a vac truck, a vacuum truck, that we rent. So we have it rented now, and we have five area headquarters in the northern neck, and we rotate it around. Everybody gets it for a week. So it's not something that we can always do immediately in one certain place, but we have a, we have a system.
Okay. Thank you.
Because you... Because you, you really notice it after, after a big rain, it's a lot of them around that need to be cleaned. And like Mr. Fisher said, we'll get a list together for you. And could you, you, you don't mind, send me some other dates if you can, so we can meet on Lake Road.
Did you get my email?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I got it late, and I couldn't work my schedule, so I'm sorry I didn't reply back on that. But if you can, I figured I would see you here, so that would be the best way. If you don't mind, send something else. Whenever you can do it, we'll meet down there.
Okay. In my report, I guess you all have a copy of it, but I'll just briefly, I was going to thank the county for their help in the tornado cleanup and all that. It's a very much a joint effort, and, you know, from the volunteers, the fire department, ENAs, sheriffs, state police, you know, everybody's out there trying to make it all work and make sure everybody's safe and, and get things back to the way they should be. So we finished the cleanup on Out Town today as far as the debris. We have some ditch work and shoulder work to do. Let's see, on the upcoming list, we, the curb and gutter on 360 through Heathville's been swept. We're still working on some of the rest of it. And all the asphalt patches that we had planned, those are complete now, too. The plant mix schedule and the pavement schedule, that's under construction now. They've done the line eradication. I believe we're doing Sunny Bank and Lewis Etta Road. Sunny Bank will be the first one. Should be towards the end of the month. You'll see paving out there. Also, on the India report, we've been tracking this one for a while, scour repairs at Bushmill Creek on, on 601. That went to add in February, and it's clustered with a bunch of other bridges that have scour repairs that need to be done. I believe it's four or five others. The bids came back high, so we're evaluating those bids, and it looks like they're going to put that back out to add. So there'll probably be some delay with that project before it can be awarded. But those are all the updates I had.
All right. Nothing else from any board members? Staff have anything? All right. Mr. Beal, thank you for your time on this. Any other public hearing again?
Actually, I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
I apologize. The library was, had a question about a tree in front of their building there, and weren't sure if that was something that would be taken care of by BDOT, or if that's in, in the easement there. If you don't mind taking a look at that, and I can get back up with you.
Okay. If you just, you, you want me to just contact you, or?
That's fine.
Which tree is it? Is the great big one right there on the corner?
It's the, I think it's the Big Sycamore or something right there, right on the main road there.
Okay.
There is another one on the church property-
Maybe that's the one I'm thinking of.
-that's up further, but this is on past that. It's by the library side.
All right, I'll turn and look at it.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Beal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I want to say everything we have is a closed meeting, and I think we will take a 10-minute break before we go into closed meeting. All right?
Sounds good.
Sound good for you, Mr. Long?
Yeah.
All right.
That's great.
I got the hint.
Good thing.
Take some, take a motion to go into closed meeting with the proper language.
I need a motion that the North Holland County Board of Supervisors convene a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.237-11A7 for consultation with legal counsel pertaining to two specific legal matters where such consultation or briefing and open meeting would adversely affect the board's negotiating or litigating posture. And Section 2.237-11A29, discussion of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds, including interviews with bidders or offers, and discussion of terms or scope of such contract where discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, county attorney, and assistant county administrator, as they are deemed necessary, and the presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia for you, Section 2.237-12F.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We enclose meeting now, gentlemen.
All right. Everybody got their mic? Yeah. I need a motion that the North Holland Board of Supervisors return a public meeting and certify by roll-call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
I'll make a motion. You gonna make a motion?
Yep.
All right, got a second?
I'll second it.
All right, got a motion, a second, now roll-call vote. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Andy votes aye. All right, we need to take some action on Southern Air. So we need to approve the contract to go for another year with them.
I move that we enter contract with Southern Air for, for one year.
All right, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other business, Mr. Tadlock?
That's all I have.
Entertain a motion to carry over.
So move.
You got a second?
Second.
We don't have a date. Do we need a date?
Usually, if you carry over, you have, you specify a date.
All right, what if we just close the meeting, and we can always call one?
You can do that.
All right, drop your motion, and just give me a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, second, all right on that? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we owe to here before 8:00.
Good job, boss.